Go ahead.
The Airport Advisory Commission, Special Session of the City of Bisbee, County of Cochise, State of Arizona, to be held on Tuesday, November nineteen, twenty twenty-four, at five thirty P. M. at the City of Bisbee Hall, located at seventy-six Erie Street, Bisbee, Arizona, eight five six oh three. Meeting called the order by Mark.
Five and twenty-six.
Twenty-six. Roll call. Dan Callahan.
Present.
Mark Gray is present. Dina Harrington is not.
Excused.
Excused. Emperor.
Present.
Okay. Sherry. All right. So we have quorum.
Matthew is present. Yes.
Matthew is here.
Yep.
And the others. All right, okay. Called to the public, nobody's here. Old business, we don't have new business. Item one is a discussion and possible recommendation to Mayor and Council for the Airport Advisory Commission to assume managerial roles of airport property per city code. Chapter fourteen, to secure leases, negotiate through the fence agreements, work directly with the FAA, and generally manage the property as a commercial asset on behalf of the City of Bisbee. We will be voting on this, so let's have a discussion. I would start by saying that I think that the best way to encapsulate or describe what this would be is kind of like a property manager for somebody who owns the property, which would be the city, the property manager acts on behalf of the property owner, but the property owner always has signature authority over all decisions. It would be a little bit of an expansion of the Airport Advisory Commission in that we would be shorting the advisory, going direct, reporting directly to the city council on a regular basis, and that can be in any form that the city council prefers. I would prefer a report, it's a fairly standard. How much money we've made, those things that should be, you know, how the money should be dispersed, and of course, working on the through-the-fence agreements. And in any event, when we're working with the FAA, that would be on the city's behalf. Again, we can't be the city, but we can, we can fill in that gap there. So, who else? Anyone have any to add or questions that we should iron out before we take a vote?
Right. So, right when you started talking about reporting, the... Did you mean that, that decisions are happening with supervision, with active supervision from, from the city, or like totally independent and reporting means you tell them what we just did?
It's in the middle.
Maybe that isn't very...
I think I understand. It would be when you have a commercial property management, sort of an agreement, arrangement, what you would do is you'd say, it's kind of like, let's say Matt were the authority on this, he is the airport manager, we could say, "Matt, would you sign this?" And he'd look at it and go, "Ah, it's a lease to this person, this amount." Yeah, I'd sign that. And then he'd sign it. But we wouldn't have signature authority, we would just prepare it.
That answers my question.
So he would kind of have an inbox of stuff that we would say.
Yeah. I'm, I'm beating the devil's head with this here. I'm like, you're presenting this to me, the mayor, and whoever.
City council.
And then, and I'm, and I want to argue.
Okay.
I'm not, I'm not saying I dislike anything that we've been up to, I just like... Okay, so now, okay, what's, is there a plan? Is there, is there some kind of business outline that you've covered for something? Is there, are there, are there any kind of like known steps to this? And, and then the next question would be, well, why didn't you just tell the city and the city could do it?
Well, I think I'll start, I'll field this one. I think I'd start by saying that the city has not collected FAA funds now for how many years?
Yeah.
Because they haven't negotiated the clear defense agreements. I see that as really the tip of the spear, because we need money to do anything, otherwise we're frozen, of course. So I think that negotiating the through-the-fence agreements is something that, that we can do on the city's behalf, that would be better than the city employees doing it, because there's already kind of a stalemate between the two sides, and we would come in as a neutral.
So what if the mayor at that point says, "But we did this, and this, and this, and this, and this." Personally, I know we've gotten really friggin' close a couple of times to have an agreement, and, and one of the time was a total classic, okay? Because we got right there, and then the FAA guys changed positions. All of a sudden, there was a whole new set of people to deal with, and then, and that wasn't, that wasn't the city's sense fault, I mean, it was really frustrating.
I believe it.
But, but, so, the idea is saying that the city has, has done nothing, and is, and is, and is not trying in any way, probably ought to figure some, couch the words a little bit, but, but I don't think the city's gonna disagree with the idea of it hasn't worked, okay? The idea that the city has never, never tried to get this to work is, is different, because the city genuinely put into it. And then, and then other people outside, Maryland for sure, had a lawyer who's now retired that was really good at FAA stuff, and he, he worked a whole different agreement, and that shot down at the same time as all the stuff that had to do with the city, because the FAA just friggin' went to a different job.
I would say first of all, it's not about blame or how we got to this place. I would say in fact, what I'm asking the city to do is to continue to try to get this resolved by bringing in us as a volunteer team to come in. We don't cost anything to the city.
As stewards of, yeah, okay.
And we don't have any signature authority, which is really important, because first of all, it keeps us out of any kind of personal anything liability as, as far as that goes.
Well, there's a bunch of that I can't do, because I'm a property owner.
Yeah, you're gonna have to...
Yeah, I gotta, I'm gonna, I can, I've been through a whole bunch of this stuff, and we can talk about it on and on, and we can do whatever, but, so, yeah, we need to find a way toward the whole presentation, almost exactly what you just said to me. So it looks, the word, the wording is probably...
Most important.
Yeah, it's probably, you know, we gotta be graceful somehow, and, and don't, don't let Pocken and other people say, "Oh, you're just a bunch of failures," because, you know...
Same word says that we're saying that the city is... I think there's been some failed attempts in part of, for whatever reason, and I think this is just a different option to go about it, to grant us a stewardship.
Do you have the expanded, I'm sorry to ask again, as I did last time, but could you find on your phone the expanded?
Yeah.
That we actually did some wording of this, this is sort of a truncated version of the longer, we'll read that to you, we worked on the wording on that. Because a big part of this, sorry, a big part of this is resolving it, so that in a year's time, the idea would be that either we, this is temporary, so we would have this expanded role for a year, after the year, we want to find a long-term sponsor for the airport, maybe that's the City of Bisbee, if the City of Bisbee is willing to do the things that it needs to do to be a sponsor of the airport, or perhaps it may be another entity that we find someplace, or that we help facilitate the creation of.
And, and we would put together some kind of a, kind of a workbook, a steps of what we plan on doing, so we're not just...
So, and, and, and so, we don't, we don't have a engineer right now, do we?
No, because we don't have the FAA, you know, yeah, on that now.
That's, that's a major handicap to everything, to both sides.
What's the role of the engineer?
They, they, they know how, exactly how to pull off every step from the master plan, and every step that's, that's needed, and if something else comes up, opportunities that come up from the state, whatever, they know how to do all of that.
This is grants? The master plan has expired, though.
Yep, it's, it's, in the eyes of the FAA, it's still there someplace, okay? And then, and if, and everything comes back, they're gonna say, "This is what we're doing until we get a new modification," and then all of the, all of the money that went to the neighborhoods and everything, the engineers are the ones that are gonna find the route to, to getting that back, because they'll say, "Okay, now we're gonna build a patio, now we're gonna do lights, or now we're gonna do..."
I believe the city manager, I think he told me that it's gone.
Until we get FAA goes back.
Till we get...
Do you think there's a pot of money waiting for us?
You know, there, there, all of the money that was annually deferred on, on various big things, went to, to the neighboring someplace in Arizona, and then, and, and it's available to go after again.
Do you really think Douglas has a million and a half bucks or something?
They're not, it's not, it come from Douglas, Douglas just isn't gonna get any money from us.
Everyone's everywhere. Really?
Yep, because they already got, they got it ahead of time.
Don't you think, well, doesn't that, they have to fire everybody and have tumbleweeds on their runway if they don't get any funding, like it's...
I believe it is, unless they aren't gonna get any funding, it's just that whatever, whatever the new money, until all that's up.
Let me read this before, okay, so here's the wording, this is an expansion, okay. Given, because you're bringing up some of this too, "Given an eleven-year running funding gap of one point six five million, deferred maintenance on critical systems, and a consistent draw on the city's general fund, the City of Bisbee must reevaluate its future relationship with the Bisbee Municipal Airport. The Airport Advisory Commission recommends expanding its scope of responsibilities for a period of one year, reporting quarterly to the city council, to assume all management responsibility for the airport property. In its expanded role, the Airport Advisory Commission would act as agent for the city council to negotiate directly with the FAA, airport adjacent property owners, and other stakeholders to determine future airport sponsorship. The expanded Airport Advisory Commission would immediately assume operational and property management responsibility per city code fourteen point one, to prepare leases, negotiate TTFAs on behalf of the City of Bisbee until such time that a permanent future sponsorship arrangement is agreed." So, that's, I think it better, you know, illustrates what we're proposing, and...
At least it was a start for it.
Yeah, no, no, there's, there's plenty of pretty beautiful rhetoric in there, and, so, me as mayor.
The mayor.
What kind of, you know, list of, list of ideas about what is, what is, what is all operations responsible for all operations, what is, what does that mean to you? Or, or what if, what if something goes wrong with the card reader, which I know never happens, or who's taking care of that?
That initial would come to us. As the property managers, we would, we would receive.
He's, he's so thoroughly trained in, in card readers, card reader gymnastics now, wouldn't it...
It would ultimately land in laps, a net lap.
Wouldn't it be helpful to have...
Oh, no, we're not saying we're gonna do this in lieu of the city, what we're doing is we're saying...
I mean, this is a dumb example, that is...
But it's a real-life example, no, what, Matt is gonna continue to be the airport manager.
Yeah, what if, what if the fuel company shows up two weeks later, and they have to split load somewhere else, and now we get like a thousand gallons instead of five thousand gallons.
Those kind of things happen in business, I think, what kind of things would you have to figure out?
Yeah, believe me, and I, when I ran the airport nearly, I had every, every, everything imaginable.
So this is...
We had jets stuck on the ramp because you couldn't, and helicopters, because you can't go from Las Vegas to Alcoa, or, or One Amaca, or Swindover without stopping immediately, those are what if, like, you know, ideas, or what if this, or what if that, but I mean, is there a plan already in place for what if those things happen? Somebody takes care of it, and then instead of us...
I think the answer is no.
Instead of, instead of us having to re-impact the wheel, there's things that the city already...
Right.
So the plan is with emphasis on safety, to implement a safety measure to, for those what if moments. Okay. So, that's, we pretend to be mayor, right? This isn't Dan, this is Dan, with a different face. So, what if, so, do you have any kind of checklist on how you're gonna approach the FAA, and what are you gonna do different than, than whatever? I can, I can tell you really well how the city attacked things before, before Matt, and, and actually, the first, the first time, we had all the retirement guys go away and then come back, and then, and Matt, Matt probably knows pretty well, you know, my office used to be upstairs over there, you were, you were working here then also, so, what, do you have steps in mind on how to approach the FAA?
I have steps in mind.
You mean all of us?
Yeah. The steps are in my mind right now, but yeah, for sure. I, I actually wouldn't suggest that we do this unless I felt like first of all it was necessary, and also doable, achievable, and not just the through-the-fence agreements, but to secure the leases, I think, is, is essential. What I want to do is, what I'm, what, what we're proposing to do, you've had a chance to talk about this a little bit already, but I think the proposal here is to take this on as a project, break it into areas of kind of project ownership. So, you know, perhaps one of us is in charge of fuel, and gates, and safety, and one of us is in charge of doing leases, and another one is in charge of taking on the lead role of negotiating with the through-the-fence agreements. We kind of need to break it apart, because part of it is that we are still an advisory commission, and so we have limited ability to get together, unless a task force or something is, gets created, I don't know how to structurally do that, but I...
Yeah, there's gotta be something that's early from the local media force.
Right.
Because they still have that.
Yeah, we still have that. So, but if we break it apart, right now, the city does this as a part-time, sort of a sideshow, like your title is not airport manager on your business card, but...
That's one of the hats.
One of the hats.
Yes. And that's pretty common in, in small towns, and then, like Eureka, Nevada, has a councilman, actually right now, I just think he is, and the councilman is a consultant to the city in county, and then, and then, but he lead, being in Pike County, has airport manager, but right now, it's the guy that takes care of public works, almost always it's public work, public works, and then...
Doesn't steal seats.
And it turns into a bowl of spaghetti, because public clerk's money is getting used on the airport, every, every friggin' place there's an airport, public clerk's money is coming into the airport, and you could, you know, you, I mean, the city, you know, right? In this background, we're also included in trying to find someone that could potentially be an airport manager. Well, if we're gonna do that, then I got a, I got a bunch of airport management books and outlines and stuff, and we, and I'm sure the city has, you know, a list of things for each position, that they've got, you know, all the dumb stuff, be able to lift seventy pounds and walk upstairs and...
Exactly.
There's no budget here, so this would be purely volunteer.
Right.
And we're talking about this organization, which has already been sort of vetted, because it's, the city council and the mayor already said okay to us being here, so adding, we could have another application and understand, so that, that the rate, we could get a little more person here.
You have two vacancies.
So, yeah, we could fill one of those, it's a good thing. But anyway.
So we'll be acting as essentially kind of airport managers.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Essentially, the airport doesn't have a manager, it's some...
No, it's an airport manager for me.
Well, there, there's a airport manager, and it's an airport property manager.
Airport manager could just sit down, right?
What we need is an airport sponsor, which is even more than a manager, we need an entity that employs a manager to manage the airport. The city can't do that right now, because the airport is...
But we can still come in and...
Okay, so if you, if you say...
He's still the airport manager.
Right, so we can go to him.
We're advising him, and we're, we're, we're continuing our advisory role, we're just doing it a, a more proactive version, so that our activities are not limited to getting together and discussing things, they're out in the field.
Right, but as we're doing these tasks, for instance, as we divide these responsibilities of, right, safety, fuel, tax rates, runways, having someone physically present at all the time is to, to have that continuity of, well, that someone actually... You're talking about physically? Physically.
But we don't have any money.
Right, but the, the way they ran it before was someone in that building.
That building.
Yeah, but, I mean, they weren't, I mean, they were there, I mean, because I was in that position. Someone actually, not that, that type of person, someone who, if we put a requisition out saying, "These are the rules, rules and responsibilities, by the way, the compensation package is this, free housing, blah, blah, blah," or however the city...
Like airport books, site manager, or something like that.
And essentially, there's someone out there that, that that could be appealing to, someone retired, someone who already has like a pension come in or something, and has experience, but to put that out publicly throughout the state, not just, you know, here in Bisbee. Yeah.
Where is that apartment at right now?
And if we get nothing, we get...
Is it moving forward, that little apartment?
Yeah, it's been slowed down a little bit, for families, for the guys, guys that does not, so he's been...
Nothing to explore that.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, right now, there's, we don't, we're at the point where you don't want a work with person in there, so there's no sense of putting a work with person that doesn't have the experience, right?
We don't want a city employee specifically.
There might be a specialist out there looking to relocate from metropolitan city that has the...
Has the knowledge.
Skills, uh...
Background.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty close. So I don't think it hurts to put requisition out publicly throughout the state of Arizona, link it in or something, and see what kind of responses you get. Through like, I don't know, I'm not sure, but they go out, the positions go out through different avenues that goes throughout state, country, you know, all that.
What, I think the challenge that we have is that we are an advisory commission, and so we can't, as I understand it, get together to have any kind of meetings, but we can increase our meeting frequency, and if we have another member, hopefully another, another of the seven is full, then getting, you know, quorum is not as hard as it has been. And I think we could make a lot of progress if we have monthly meetings. We could get together, let's say Sherry's in charge of fuel, as an example, I'm not saying you're in charge of anything until you're happy, but, but let's say you're in charge of fuel, and once a month is rather frequent, or you can always reach out to one person, right? We're not having a meeting without the public, which you could imagine as anything.
Well, how, the best, I mean, not necessarily here, but I mean, yeah.
Here or the other.
I mean, soon, in five months, we'll be in our new building, five, six months, so it'll be a whole...
Be there.
A whole different avenue, but what...
It was way easier when everything was over there.
Yeah, everything can go through Lorena or Nida, so if you have something that you want to send to somebody, it's better if you send it to one of them and say, "Hey, can you send this out to the, to the commission?" And they'll, they can send that out, and then if there's any, and if you're requesting a reply, then those replies would go back to Lorena or whoever, and, and then they would take those replies and give them, like, if you were the one that requested, they would go, she'd send them to you. That way, we're not messing up the whole media logs either.
Right.
So you, you don't want to pass something to him, and then him to her, you don't want to do that, that's kind of, that's stretching the lines pretty good.
This can be construed also as making a working group, or...
You can have work sessions.
We can have work sessions, and, and I think we should switch to a monthly, at least a monthly work session schedule, and just make that what we do. And I think we could actually get a lot done if we did that, and it's just for a year, so we're not like committing to some crazy project, it's just...
And you're just a manager for the life. Right, so, so that's a really good reply to the city fathers when they say, "What makes you think you," meaning us.
Well, actually, we have a lot of city council women, I think, that's what it amounts to.
Yeah, "What do you guys, how, you know, what do you guys, how come you guys think you can do it better?" Well, because focus a little bit better, because we're not thinking about the rest of the city of, and who knows, whatever the, the next clown act is downtown, and then, and then...
It's inexperienced.
A meeting on a regular basis, and, so, so, yeah, there's literally a little list of things that, that we have success.
I think so, and we can, this is up to us as a group, the way that this is worded and the way that we would present this to the city council, is if they had any questions, we would answer them, we would want to present to them that this is, this is what we see, because after all, this is totally within the purview, what we're supposed to do, we're advising them, this is what's really needed here. And I think even falling back on the argument of what could go wrong, what are you guys doing this so great? You know, give us a year, see if we make a difference, and if we don't, it costs the city zero dollars, and...
That's why the little short answers like you just gave are, are a good response to just, just that, okay? There's a couple of things here, and, and, you know, if you guys are busy, you, you can, you know, the design review board and other things are all, bring them down your neck for a while.
Yeah.
And besides that, Cynthia Conrak could walk in the office and have a whole new list of demands in the next five minutes. I know that never happens.
So the way I think we would break it down is, you know, running the airport, this is a project that we would take on immediately, and, and I think that we would want to break it down into, it's, it's a business, it's a small business, and you have experience with small businesses, I mean, all of us probably do something, but it's about...
And the guys, the guys that are here that have been babysitting it along the way are part of the advisor, head advisor. And the guys, the guys that are here that have been babysitting it along the way are part of the advisor, advisors is.
Who are you referring to specifically?
Mister, Mister Matt.
He's still the city airport manager.
Just as long as, just as long as the mayor and everybody thinks we're not running off to do something else without.
No, what I want this to do is.
There's no lack of suspicion in the city movements.
Yeah.
Overall things, there's some kind of scheme somewhere. When you get to city and county, let alone the president. We won't even go there.
No. Yeah.
Okay, we're good.
So I think, should we vote on this? It's, it's merely a vote for us, do we as a group vote to make a presentation to the city council? To see what their take is on this?
Yes.
Yes.
Alright, so.
Okay, so let's do.
Do that vote now.
Yeah, so I need, someone needs to make a motion. Okay, I make a motion that, what are we gonna call this? The recommendation of mayor and city council, the airport advisory commission have increased their managerial or assumed managerial. I'm not sure assumed is the word, but, but it works. So, um, that'll be enough words.
Now, I have a second half. So, what do you have on that? I didn't take a copy on that. Are we voting on as this is written here or are we gonna read?
It's, yeah, it would be, it, that's the easy thing, we approve as it's written.
What did you say, Dan, is that your motion?
Yeah, yeah, I just, I just, if somebody has, has a, a way to couch the word as a little bit better, otherwise just leave it. Nobody, nobody has an idea?
Not really, cause assume it's, it's to take, to take leadership, to take, to take managerial roles.
Okay, that's, I have no argument. So it'll be the, the recommendation of mayor and city council of our advisory to some managerial roles at the airport per city code fourteen.
Okay, alright, so as written.
And.
I'll say a motion, you're second. And then all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, passes. And then the last thing is on the back.
Yeah.
Yay.
It's been modified.
Went, uh, the next meeting, uh.
Let's, they're worried sometime, we don't know yet.
And then as far as going to the city council at this point, would be good to just wait till January?
Yeah, the next one's December third. And then I think, I'm pretty sure they're gonna skip the last one. So it'd be some, beginning of first week or second week of January.
Okay, and then next meeting is?
February.
If we're gonna move to earlier meetings, I guess we don't have a lot to say until we have this.
Well, we can't say anything unless it pertains to this right now, tonight.
Okay, alright. Okay, I make a motion to adjourn.
I'm not, yeah, second, I'm not available December third.
Okay, well, I'm not.
All approved?
Okay.
Yes.
That's a nail in her coffin, alright. Thank you.
Good job. I didn't, I, yes, you did.
You did this meeting twice.
You called me and I didn't know that.